Welcome to the Town of Southwick Select Board Meeting for September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five. This was to be a joint meeting with the Board of Assistances at six oh five. That portion of the meeting is canceled. Um, it is six P M. We're in the Land Use Hearing Room in person and via remote hybrid format. This meeting is being recorded. If anyone else is recording, please advise Russ Anderson. And we'll start with attendance to my left.
Nicole Parker.
Diane Gale.
Doug Moglen, Russ Anderson.
Nadine Sigourney.
Thank you. And let's start with the College of Representatives.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and then moving on to public comments. Is there anyone in the room with a public comment? Not a feeling.
Yeah.
Name for the record, please.
Brian Schneider, one hundred A, Panama Lane. Uh, good evening, members of this line. On behalf of the town employees, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak and for your continued efforts to address the issue of health insurance contributions. We understand that this is a complex matter and appreciate that you're exploring options and manage costs and responsibility. That said, we'd like to respectfully express our concerns about the potential impact of any change to our current health insurance. The coverage we have now is strong and reliable, and many of us depend on it for ourselves and our families. Our primary request is not to change the plan, but to ask the town to consider country contributing at a level more consistent with the state average between seventy-five, eighty percent, as many other municipalities in Massachusetts do. We understand the board advised against a special town meeting, and we respect your judgment. However, we ask that employees be kept informed and involved before any decisions that are made that could affect our health insurance. Transparency and collaboration will help ensure that any change reflects both fiscal responsibility and well-being of the talent workforce. We're concerned that a shift of a lower-cost plan might compromise the quality of coverage, and we hope that cost-saving measures won't come at expensive employee health and security. We're committed to working with you and find a solution that supports both the town's financial goals and the needs of its employees. So, that's what we're gonna ask, just open in communication between the boards and the employees, just to transparency. That's all. Thank you.
Well, we don't normally respond. I do.
Yeah, I know. That's why I'm.
I I don't believe we said no to a town meeting. We, a special town meeting. We need the time to put that package together to make a decent presentation for town meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think we want to cheapen, certainly not my intention, to cheapen the plan either. It is just to see if there are other cost-effective, comparable, or even better plans.
Okay, no.
Available. And I'm certain that any changes are gonna be reviewed. They're not gonna be made. There's not gonna be a decision made without reviewing with the employees what those are.
Appreciate it.
What those would be. That, that would just be.
Okay.
Not good. So.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for your time.
You can hold it.
Yeah, you set up your own.
Okay.
Joanne, would you like to make a comment?
I would, but uh, just to let you know, I don't know if it's because I may have an updated um app for the Zoom. There's no raise hand option that I can see.
I can see it on my end.
Hmm, weird. Okay. Um, Joanne LeBlanc, thirty-eight Reservoir Road. And um, I'd like to comment on the fact that recently there have been several Comcast Xfinity trucks uh, in our area for about the last two to three weeks. That area includes uh, George Wumus, Reservoir, uh, Hill, Will, uh, Will Palmer, Hillside, and Granville. Um, and I was told by the cable workers, because I had, I actually stopped, because I've been having phone issues lately, and people can't call me. And I thought maybe they were working on the phone lines, and they told me they were not. Um, but they told me that they were running uh, Xfinity uh, op- fiber optic cable. So I'd like to know if you have any information that you can share with the residents um, regarding this and how this could impact any possible uh, future connections with Whip City Fiber in the future.
I don't have an answer right now.
I think we'll have to do some investigation and let uh, let you know, Joanne.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else online for public comments?
I see it, Anne. Yes.
Bye.
Good afternoon. Jason Peron, one Noble Seed Crossing, Southwick. Um, I just wanna say uh, as a former member of the board, I think everyone knows how I feel about the health insurance. Uh, one of the most important things to me is taking care of the employees, always has been, as well as the residents. I just want to speak up uh, on behalf of the employees and say, uh, I wholeheartedly, as a resident, uh, support what they need, um, and I hope we're able to get to that point with them. I know this, that the board and Nicole have been working, and Nadine have been working diligently on this since before I left the board. And but I just wanted to clearly state, you know, I really hope there's something we can do to take on an additional percentage to um, you know, to stop the bleeding as far as the employees. Um, we've lost some quality folks over the last couple of years, um, and it's tough. Um, I do have some documentation I can give to Nicole uh, down the road. I I did some research both when I was on the board um, and since, uh, and I'll make sure I get that to Nicole to help you guys out um, and just so the, the other public that sometimes looks at it and says, that's gonna cost me money, uh, so they have a little bit more information and understand what's going on. But that's all I wanted to say. Um, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else online? Okay. All right, so six oh five, we do not have that meeting, so we will move on to the dog hearing. We closed the hearing um, and we need to come to some decision on what to do.
Do you like a piece of monitor?
Excuse me?
Do you like a piece of monitor?
Uh, no, I think this is for a board discussion on what the resolution shall be. Um, start with my thoughts on it. Uh, Mr. Matzik agreed that he could raise both of the upper deck railings to prevent the possibility of Zara jumping over those. Um, so I would recommend that they do that um, and remove any of the blocks that are on the inside. I noted when we were out there on the property, there was a lead attached to a bush in the front left yard. Um, I would also recommend that whenever Zara is not inside that fenced area, that she must be on a lead or a leash. And even if she's chasing golf balls, she should be on that lead. Uh, this is consistent with other dog hearings we have requiring that lead. And um, I think as part of it, the Matzik family must all agree that they will continue to be diligent in investigating and monitoring how Zar may be leaving their property, whether by her own mental and physical agility or by human error on that. Um, if she escapes again, she may be declared a dangerous dog. And um, if that happens, they may not be able to retain homeowner's insurance. She might be removed from the home, or she may even have to be euthanized. I think if they take those measures, um, we might have a safer situ- we should have a safer situation, and I welcome your thoughts and additional recommendations.
Well, I think even common, you, we have an application or a hearing in front of us, and we need to we need to bring it to some kind of conclusion, so we can either find the dog dangerous, we could find the dog not dangerous, or we can hold this in abeyance for a outstanding uh, a period of time, subject to an agreement. So, and that agreement would be a consent, like, almost like a consent decree by the owner in conjunction with the town that kind of, if the conditions of said agreement were based on what we're just laid out, that we would hold this in abeyance for a year, and if there's no further activity, then the, then you'd close out the hearing. Or if there's any other thing, we'd come back and, and re, re, have have to rehear or, or, or act upon new information. But I don't, I think that that's the only three things you can do here, and so it has to be by agreement. And, and then if, if the owner agrees to the conditions herein, then you can proceed with that, that disposition. Or then if, or if they don't, well, then the board needs to come to conclusion whether the dog is dangerous or not, and adjudicate that, subject to the bylaw we have in, in front of us. I, cuz I really think we can't just mandate that it has to be by agreement, cuz the only thing in front of us is that.
To attempt to.
Just wanna be clear as to what we're doing here.
Of course.
So.
But that's my recommendation that we agree to that, and Russ, you have.
Were we seeking legal counsel as to what we could ask or not ask?
Never got back to me twice. I even called.
I don't know. I, I, I mean, I know those are minor.
That's why with, with these conditions, these, he already agreed that he could raise the railings. He already has the lead in the front yard.
Yeah, I guess my only question on the the lead part, I mean, we haven't declared it a dangerous dog yet, so to tell the, to tell the owner that it has to be on a lead, I don't know if it could fix with itself. Uh, and I understand what you're saying. I just it's still his responsibility to control the dog, whatever he does. Whether it's a lead, shock collar, a fence, whatever, all the above. So, to me, I personally, while I agree with most of what there, I agree with more of a global, it's his responsibility to secure that dog as a possibility of it being dangerous. Second half of that is that what you said, up to euthanization and losing the dog, if he doesn't fix it, so it just seems like it should be a global answer, not a particular arrangement. So what happens if he jumps over the fence anyways? Or there's something, he breaks the leash. I mean, I mean, there's, there's still a handful of things that could happen.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it's his responsibility to come up with something to control the dog. That's, I, I, I don't know if we are supposed to make that answer. That's why I was hoping for legal counsel.
So do you want to wait for legal counsel to? Um, I we've made these, in, in my time here, this is what, the third or fourth one?
Yeah, this is one a year.
We've made these similar
agreements.
Agreements.
In absence of a finding. Because.
It is his responsibility, if he agrees to do these, it is his responsibility. This gives us some assurance that the neighbors will be able to walk by if the dog is on a lead in the front yard.
Right. I understood. I, I mean, I.
If, if, if this goes into effect and the dog still escapes and threatens someone, clearly we have a determination that the dog is a threat, and that is our determination at that point.
No, I, I understand that. I just, we, some of the stuff wasn't reported before. You know, there, we found out other things through the, through the hearing, but it wasn't reported at the time. So there's a lot of variances, but I mean, your, your green, I don't know, contract, whatever, isn't that over the top, let's say? I, I could go with that, if that's something we wanna do. But I do think we really need to get legal counsel as to cuz everything has a ripple effect. We tell you to do Z, and, and, you know, A happens, are we liable? That, that becomes my question.
I see it. I just, I just think that the, the third, the third option is you know, absent legal counsel, but the third option is such that you could, if they agree to that, I don't think it makes what could the town more or less liable, cuz like our current, I lost it. Hundred percent, because if, based on what we have, you have every indication that this dog could be a dangerous dog. If you make that finding, that has a bad outcome for the homeowner and the dog, no matter how you look at it. If, just not from my own personal experience, but from what I've read, a, a, a home with a da- a do- a dangerous dog finding is uninsurable. You can't insure your home. That, if you have a mortgage, you can't have a mortgage cuz you don't have insurance. It, it just gets, it's a cycle that no one wants to get into. So this is kind of and you know, an agreement like this, and, and you know, if you enter into an agreement like that, yes, it's, it's more arduous than every other dog in town, but this dog has demonstrated an ability that it doesn't wanna stay on its property for whatever reason, or it wants to bug people walking by. So you, you go to this level. If they don't wanna agree to it, great, and we can go to the finding of what we're gonna, you know, what we would decide and find. Um, and if something else happens from here, well, then you just come right back, you reopen the hearing that you've held in abeyance, and you find that dog dangerous, and then you figure out what's gonna happen. We've been down this, you know, I've had, I, I, it's uncanny that it is about once a year, so um, you know, we've had different agreements with different folks. We've brokered or been party to one where the dog left town and was traded for a player to be named later. We've had dogs that um, where people entered an agreement with fences or other things like that. At the end of the day, for me is this dog needs to be secured, because so far his behavior, and, and I'm gonna circle back this, his behavior has not been good. And you know, frankly, one hundred percent of the time, I said this, I'll say it again, one hundred percent of the time, you can't, you have to look at the owner more than the dog. The dog doesn't know any better, right? It's the owner's job to recognize the disposition of the dog and to behave accordingly, to not have that dog be a menace to the neighbors and to the people of Southwick at large. So, I think it's it's mag- almost magnanimous for us to offer a potential solution that this dog doesn't come out that front of that house without it being on a lead, right? And if not, it needs to be in the back in a fenced-in area, and if, and, and if it's not, we're gonna be right back here, and we will produce a finding of that being a dangerous dog, if he, if he bothers anyone else menacingly in the Town of Southwick, again, period. That, that's just how I see it, and for, you know, whether um, and, and I think that's the third option that we've had, is kinda to give people, I don't wanna say a last chance, but
An opportunity.
An opportunity to correct the behavior of the dog, when they haven't done a real good job so far of, of correcting that behavior. You know, we already have, you know, we've been to court once. There's additional stuff that needs to go back through the court and get that finished up. But if we set this kind of rule up, and we did it with the dog off of Powder Mill last year, I believe, or maybe been earlier this year, right? And we haven't seen nor heard from that dog since. So obviously, something's working out good. As far as I know, the dog is still there, but he's not bothering anybody anymore. So this is that opportunity. And so if, if the owner is willing to, to sign on to that agreement under the conditions imposed by this board as the hearing, um, the hearing body, then we can move forward. If they're not willing to sign on to that agreement, well, then we need to move to the next step, which is for us to vote on a finding for this dog, and then, then you go from there.
Oh, wow.
I, I think Doug and I.
I didn't wanna scare Nadine again.
I think Doug and I are in agreement.
No, I'm not, I'm not disregarding.
And I'm not disregarding
I
legal counsel's.
I think we, as a board, we have a duty to act to protect the public.
Correct.
You've outlined something at um, that's, I think, reasonable, manageable, although it didn't talk about back fees. Payment of.
Those, I think that's a separate issue.
Okay.
That's, we ask that to be processed through the court.
Right. Um, but I would agree with you, if, if they'll agree to it.
Does that sound like something the family is going to agree to?
Well, yeah, um, I would just wanna know what, like, exactly what we're, we're agreeing to. Um, and we have made up efforts to go in, you know, like, prevent this from happening. I feel like you said, we always fail to go in, you know, like, prevent this from happening, but it was, you know, quite a bit of times it happened, and then we went and took measures, and it's been one time in the last three years. So we have been taking steps to further prevent this. Uh, you know, lifting up the fence, making it higher, that's something I said, like, you know, we could look into it, definitely. Um, you know, keeping the dog in the backyard, completing golf, was keeping the backyard, um, electrical fences, that's something like we've been looking into too. Um, we got some e-collars, so we have been looking at, like, stuff. Um, and I think, you know, when you go and say the dog can't be in the front yard without a leash, um, yeah, I mean, that's something we could also do. It's it's.
I just wanna say, we, we have not stated that you have not taken measures. We understand that you have been, you have been taking measures.
Okay, no, we, Doug just said, like, five minutes ago, that you said that we haven't taken any measures. I just wanted to clarify that we did, like, we're not just going, like, trying to be, like, negligent and letting the dog out, like, every single time there's been an incident, we've been.
No, I don't think I said that. I don't think I said that. And if I did, I, I, I misspoke, but I did not say you didn't take any measures. But the fact is, we're still have outstanding, we, we've had a complaint on this dog of recent that caused us to be in front of in front of us for a dangerous dog hearing. And so all I'm asking, I guess what I'm asking here is, if we give you four bullet points, and we'll be very clear about what those four bullet points are, not, I'll consider this, or I'll consider that, you know, and, and we'll agree as a board and yourself what those four, and I'm making four, three, four, five, whatever it is, you know, this, 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 and this, if you agree to do this, we will hold this, this hearing in abeyance for one year or ninety days, or whatever the term that the board decides, by agreement with yourself. If you don't agree to it, then that's fine, that's okay. We'll just come, we will come to a judgment on the evidence that's been presented to us so far, as to what we're gonna do about this dog. I think, obviously, an agreement to try to keep this dog not found as a dangerous dog is the best for yourself. Zara is the dog's name? Zara, right, and the select board for that matter, um, and for the residents of Town of Southwick. So let's come to that agreement, and you know, I, I paraphrased what she said, was, you know, it was, the dog doesn't come off the lead, adjust the height of that fence on the um,
Upper deck.
On the upper deck. And the, you know, and, and, you know, if it's in the backyard, it's within a fenced area that she can't get out of, that's great. And I, if there was a four and five, that's it. Simple. You know, if you take other measures, you choose to take other measures, that, that's all well and good, right? And you know, whether, uh, you know, whatever those measures are that you think you need to do based on that, on Zara's behavior, so that she stays within the rails, we're good. Right? But those are, those three things I think are kinda non-negotiables from us, based on what we've seen and heard so far. Right? And I appreciate the fact, I saw, we saw photos and stuff at our last meeting of things that had been done to the house, and with levers and handles and so on and so forth to so I, I, I didn't mean to imply that you haven't done anything, but the fact is that we're in front of this board for a dog hearing means that whatever's been done today, to date, hasn't been sufficient enough to stop the behavior, so we gotta figure that out. And then, you know, on the, the fines and the rest of it, I think we've gotta let that play out through the court, cuz there is a process available to someone to hear, have those heard in, in court and have those decided. And the other thing, kind of a side topic, but the other thing to come out of that is for us as a board, and to go to town meeting and to figure out if legislative, legislatively, we should not allow people to register a dog or pull a building permit or anything else if they've got outs- you know, outstanding fees and fines for anything with the town that are unpaid, that have completed the court process. Right? That's, that's something I have in my notes that I wanna take a look at, you know, um. So, but I think getting back to this, I think it's three or four items that she, she clearly communicated that those are what we would put into an agreement between yourself as the registered owner of the dog and the town. And, and if we all agree to that, then we'll hold this in abeyance for a period of, you decide. And, you know, we'll revisit that at the end of that period and say, okay, we've had no problems, the corrective measures have been put in place and continue to be in place, and you know, we'll conclude the hearing with a, you know, a, a positive or a negative finding on the dog until, you know, and hopefully we never have to see you in front of us for a dog hearing again.
I agree.
That's it.
I, and I think having an agreement is obviously what we all want to do. Um, yeah, so we could go and find out some four, five bullet points and then go.
I think we have them, so I think I wanna, I wanna get those agreed to here now, and then we'll put it to writing, and that we can all execute, provided that you agree to the four things in general. We'll put it to writing, and then we'll have everybody sign it, and then it, then, then we'll agree to continue the, this without a finding until a certain date, right? So that's it.
All right, just to recap. Sorry, go ahead.
Um, no.
Are you explaining it to them?
Yeah.
Okay.
This has to be. This is. I just have a question. My, uh, could be suggested to leave.
I'm sorry?
No, no.
Okay, so let me just recap that. We are suggesting if there is an agreement that we would hold a negative finding in abeyance for a period certain, we'll put a date to it. If we all agree that the upper deck railings will be raised to prevent her from being able to jump out and any ob- any obstacles cleared from there. Um, she remains inside the fenced area. If she's outside the fenced area, it is on a lead or a leash.
What about the backyard? Because the backyard, um, you know, there's a fence on both sides, and then in the very back, it's surrounded by vegetation where she doesn't go through.
That would be outside the fenced area would need to be on a lead, cuz I did see she can go anywhere through that back area. That is wide open.
It's sounding e-collar, cuz I have that too.
I
What's an e-collar?
Electra, electric.
Electric fence?
It's a, it's a, it's on a remote, so when I go and I play with her outside in the backyard, there's more grass in the unfenced area, but I, it's on a remote, there's an e-collar. And she responds to me without the e-collar. When the neighbors saw her outside the front, they were taking pictures. The dog never even went up in her direction. It's always when, you know, no one's around, somehow the dog gets out. But even with the e-collar, and I'm out there, she listens to me, but I'm willing to go and put on an e-collar, and she responds to that as well, you know, buzzes versus a warning, and then um, you, you have the ability to shock. So first you give the noise, she listens, she knows the noise, then you go and buzz. If she weren't to listen, and then the third one would be the zap. It's the same thing as the e-collar, but I'm controlling it, so I'm in my backyard, and I control where. But that, um, and I have a picture of it on my phone, that, like, I have it, it's just, you know, just it's not on leash, it's in my backyard, basically calling it. I, I was wondering if that's something that.
If you're, I, I would say if you're out there with her and you have that e-collar on, you can recall her with that. I would say that's fine. Are you guys familiar with the e-collar?
Not at all, so I defer on that particular town.
Okay.
Dude, sometimes they call it a training.
It's a training.
I, I think I get it. I just.
Yeah, they hear a buzz, they learn to buzz.
If you don't, he's lying, he's buzzing.
Don't give anyone any ideas up here, Mr. Grinnell. Thank you. No, I, I get what it is. I, I, I just don't have any experience with it, so I'll let people who know more about it then.
So we will write that in, and then I said the Matzik family must agree, and I'm speaking of the adults in the household, because you've all claimed ownership of that dog at one time or another, um, that you all agree to be diligent in closing doors, in observing and monitoring how she may be getting out. So I would ask that you all sign that. And those would be the conditions, and we can put that in writing for you. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, pretty good, I'm ready. Uh, I knew you.
All right, so we'll get that typed up for you and give you a call, and you can come in and sign. We'll, we'll sign it, you can come in and sign it. All right?
Um.
Would you say today, right?
No.
No, we have, we have to write that up. No, we have, we have to write that up. Okay.
Yeah, I hear you.
Alright, satisfactory, alright. We'll get that for you, we'll give you a call.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was really hoping that Dick was gonna show us the cowl.
Alright, then, um, lake management ramp attendant, we had scheduled an update to the conditions to the workload, come on up.
This is the trick one.
Alright, just state names for the record, please.
Ellen Kurt.
Richard Granals.
Norm Cheever.
Alright, wanna give us an update status report on how things are going?
Well, yeah, this is, I think the past, what, six or eight weeks, something like that, you had it set for thirty hours, um. Twenty-eight hours maximum, and that was during the, the busy, uh, summer boating, boating season. And so that works pretty well, but that doesn't fit unless there's some other way we can do it, that doesn't fit. The, um, the eighteen hours maximum to be. Part-time summer, and I, as I read this thing, I was just rereading. And I wanna make sure that, that I, that, uh, everybody understands this, we're on the same page. Um, can be classified as a year-round part-time employee or a seasonal employee, not both, understand that. The third option is scenario presented is to offer a full-time twenty hours or more per week. Uh, permanent employment, and that would require a town off, uh, part, I don't know, paid time off, um. So, a year-round part-time employee, I think is, that's still eighteen hours?
But some permanent part-time, uh, employees, twenty hours or more.
Okay, permanent part-time is twenty.
That's when your benefits eligible.
Okay, that's when it triggers it, once you go over the eighteen, whether it's year-round or seasonal.
Year-round.
Okay, alright, alright, if it's seasonal, it's, it.
It's seasonal, it's.
It doesn't matter, right, right, so our, Ellen is year-round because she does the, um.
Lake Management Secretary.
Lake Management Secretary work, all our clerical stuff year-round. And is currently also doing, uh, the LPP. And, and just, if you look at how that all stacks up, uh, LPP is. Uh, primarily starts in the, uh, November, December timeframe. Kind of peaks in January, February, I hope we can, just from understanding, cause Dennis Clark and I. Were the authors of the LPP, um, spent endless, endless hours doing that. Weeks, men, men months, but that kind of has gravitated to where it's too late. When it's going out, it's really gotta move that back so that people get the paperwork in the kind of February timeframe. Late January, early February, cause it's kind of been over the, over the years, been moving. For lack of people to work on the, on the, uh, LPP, it kind of moved into the March. Trickling into April, and people are boating, you know, and so now we've missed the window. Where you're supposed, if you're gonna have a dock in, cause the, the rule is, um. All non-permanent docks that are not, in other words, chapter ninety-one licensed, if they're gonna be under LPP, they gotta be out of the water by. Uh, December first, unless there's a variance given, and that, and we've granted a few, uh. But that, there's a couple reasons for that, it's to protect from having stuff get loose, and it does happen, in fact. Uh, lake management's cleared out, every year has cleared out debris. Uh, floating docks and chunks of docks and whatnot, skier hits something like that or a swimmer or whatever, I mean, it's just. Bad news, so if we're gonna address LPP properly, we gotta kind of move that back and. Really start working on it in November and December, and have everything ready to pop in January, February. And then there's, there's follow-up work for, uh, local permitting. Lake Management, the boat ramps start late March, depending on the weather, and again, weather is, has a lot to do with hours. Of, so it's ice out, and we get, uh, people out there. Last year we didn't have ice, you know, um. You know, was, it never froze over a hundred percent, but, uh.
Two years ago.
Last, oh, last year we got, yeah, two years ago it didn't, that's right, yeah, thank you, and, and that's, that's true. And so, you know, season starts very early, and that starts picking up, and when you get into May and June. Soon as the, the kids are out of school and, and vacations start, then it really picks up, so. But it's still busy in, in April, if you get good weather, May, June, July, and so the amount of time spent. Uh, overseeing and filling in, cause there's the other problem is until the, the, uh, students are out of school. We don't get our, our, uh, student help until late May. And then we wind up with, you know, this, this, again, depending on weather, if it's, if it's busy, good warm days. You need to staff, if it's raining, we don't staff, you know, if it's, it's horrible weather. There's just nobody's gonna go out boating, period, you get one or two, so that's, you just ignore it, um. And once it gets really cold, we don't, but this year, for instance, we have, there's tournaments right up. Through into, uh, the end of October, maybe one in November, two in November, so. Uh, yeah, no, thank you, but there, but that's fishermen, they, you know, they go out. They bundle up and they go out and fish, so, you know, we. We will be staffing through October, we, we staff until the docks are pulled. I mean, we, we don't feel it's fair to charge anybody, once those boarding docks are out of the water. Then they just fishermen hop over their, the bow of their boat, they pull them upon the sand, and they hop over the bow and they go out. So, um, you know, the, the normal boating season activities are done. When you get into late October, and we usually pull docks, the, the boarding docks in. Third or fourth week of October.
So, what is your goal? What are you looking to continue, I know we, we gave end of September as a test.
Right, right.
So, to see if the twenty-eight hours temporarily during the summer covered.
Yeah, yes, and, and how do we do that, how do we accomplish that? So that we go from, say, June, July, August, September, the boating season. With twenty-eight hours, is that doable somehow?
If there's money for it, for, I mean, you, so, a part-time permanent employee works. Twenty hours a week or more, it does not have to be consistently twenty hours a week.
Okay.
Um, but generally has to be at least. So if it goes up to twenty-eight hours in the summer, from twenty hours. And during the other months of the year, that's not an issue.
Okay.
But that's what, you, you can't do that when they're a seasonal employee, can't just, seasonal doesn't last all year.
Right, right.
That's what it was called, yeah, it was a seasonal.
Right, but, but Ellen is not seasonal, like I say, because she's, because of.
She has three different jobs.
There's three different jobs, that's what.
It's not, it's not one job.
No.
At twenty-eight hours, there are three different jobs filled by one person.
Right, right.
Three seasonal jobs, well.
Well, they're rotating seasons.
LMC is not.
Yeah, LMC is, is absolutely not seasonal.
LPP is turning out to be maybe, you know, maybe, I might not have to do stuff there for two months, but. You know, people have a deadline when they're supposed to get their stickers by. And also I was behind, cause I couldn't get in there to do the, to get the stickers out. So that was crazy in April and May, I was thankful for a rainy June, cause the, the ramp wasn't so busy. But then people are still sending in their applications after May fifteenth.
Alright.
I still have applications that I'm waiting for dock layout sheets and things. That are not getting processed and boating season's over, so, but when it got too busy and.
Send them in minus requirements.
But I had to train people, cause people left, it's so.
I, I understand, it's been a backlog.
Yeah.
I'm trying to have you focus on when it's current, what is the requirement, not now. Even there's still a remaining backlog, when it's current, what does it look like?
I don't know, I just.
I'd like to chime in if I could, uh, on the. On the stickers, we're only above seventy-five percent compliant with. With, with actually on the lake that, that requires stickers, it has a sticker, that's both Connecticut and Massachusetts. And the only way you fix that is for additional follow-up, okay, and we didn't have any follow-up hours. We had minimal follow-up hours this year for, because we weren't enough hours for the. Available for, okay, so we need to focus that in the future, we need more time just to do the follow-up.
And we said we have Renee, and let's recap Renee's contributions.
Sure, Renee works ten hours for conservation. Um, and it's my understanding that that, it's on Sabrina's list of tasks. The local permitting program, and so. I'm knowing that Renee could pick up some of those hours now that she's. Has ten hours on conservation.
And she has floating hours.
She does.
And how many floating hours a week?
Seven.
So seventeen total?
She was twenty hours in planning, ten hours on conservation dedicated, and then she has seven and a half hours. To float, but that can be for anybody, that's.
But she hasn't, right?
She hasn't yet.
So she's, is in conservation for seventeen and a half.
She's on that, she's in that office for thirty-seven and a half hours a week.
Between planning and.
Between planning and conservation, yes.
Is there? A reason, um. Historically, that these, that, as, as far as the dock program isn't handled through clerks or with, with. Where dump stickers are and all the other permits and stickers and everything else.
There's all, there's a lot of checking, um, of documents to make sure that everything is submitted. Biggest problem, one of the biggest problems we've had, and, and Norm is very much aware of it, is the, there's supposed to be. A, a scale drawing, it's, it provided with the permitting process, it's in the permitting process. And you're supposed to put where is your dock with, with respect to your land, because the, the reg says you're supposed to be twenty-five feet. From either boundary, now there, there are, uh, lots that are smaller, and that's where judgments have to be made. Uh, we had one.
I get that for the original docking.
For the original, but people are renewing, I mean, how many renewals do you have every year versus a new dock?
Well, you, you get renew, you get renewals, but if they change them, they have to update that.
But what's, what's the answer, how many renewals are they with no change, are they with no change realistically? Eighty-five percent of them, ninety percent?
I don't track that data.
It's gotta be pretty.
How many permits do we have?
Well, there's four hundred and sixty-five homes, waterfront homes.
Eight hundred and thirty, eight hundred and forty-five stickers or issue, is sharp?
That's boat stops.
And that's not.
Boat stops, everything.
That's a seventy-five percent of, yeah, and it should, it should have been higher, I was probably twenty-five percent.
Right, right, and, and we do a, a survey every year. We've done it now for twenty-something years of every dock, float, uh, mooring, buoy, lift. Uh, on Congamont, Connecticut MS, and, and that's, you know, part of what Norm is saying is that. The, what we sell versus what is out there, the universe. We're not at a hundred percent of the universe by any means. So every year you're trying, you know, uh, I know Norm goes out. A lot of times, and I don't know who else may from the, from Concom, but goes out and checks ones that are kind of notorious, problematic. And then we try and get them.
But that's not Ellen.
No.
But that's not Ellen.
But then it adds, it adds.
Talking about these hours.
Yes, right, but then it adds work there.
But the question was, I gotta believe eighty, eighty-five percent have to be.
Yeah, repeats. But, but also the thing that has to happen too is, is follow-up, where people do not, um. Duly permit their docks or boats or whatever, and that either has to be a, a letter, and then maybe even a certified letter. Going out, uh, to say, you know, you, because it's a fine associated with it, right in the LPP, if you do not comply. So, yeah, and that does take a lot more time to generate any of those. Unfortunately, that can gets kicked down the road all the time, because it's just, you know, it's not enough hours to, to, uh, do that kind of work.
So, so my question on centralizing that, it was, we just talked about this with, with dog hearings, dog permit, if you, you know, if you don't have a dog license. You can't get other ones, you can't, so if you have a dock that's not licensed.
Yeah.
Permitted, how would the rest of the town know that to hold some backs and dock, we don't have a central clearing of. Your information to our information and the rest of the town, right?
That could, that can certainly be done, because we have.
I had a note to have Randy Austin tell me if docks are on your tax bill. And then cross-reference it to your LPP records.
Interesting.
And then you know.
That's an interesting.
Then you may have docks that they don't have and vice versa.
And, and, uh, I don't know whether on the tax bill, but I don't see why we couldn't provide that information. So that if there's an outstanding, you know.
Correct, yeah.
House X at address Y, uh, has a dock that's unpermitted. They have outstanding fines, it, it's so many dollars per day, um, it's in the LPP. And I would think that could be provided to, uh, the clerk's office.
What about our, um, e-permitted?
Yeah, exactly, why can't we add that?
I have asked that question of the town clerk, and she said currently she could not do that.
No, this is the e-permitting, like the, the health department and the building department?
On the, on, unregistered docks. They go into the same loop as if you owe the field money, you, you can't, you can't do other things.
Yeah.
In the town, and she said currently she.
Currently, but perhaps we'd have to revise the bylaws to do so, but, I mean, that's a collection in the.
Yeah, cause is it a bylaw issue or is it a?
Process.
System issue processing.
Might be both. But I think, you know, I think we get back on the hours, cause I was thinking, like, on the, on the LPP piece, is you have to. Get the behavior where you want it to be too, like if we can get, the LPP is X by. April first, and it's X times four after that, right, and if you don't submit it correctly. Oh, okay, you, you might wanna get it in so that we can get it correctly before April first, whatever that date is, right, that's how you. And, and, hey, it's a good idea, by the way, to run it out of a different office and try to, where we. We have a process to collect money and whatever else, first time applications, good, it routes upstairs to get vetted, but if it's a renewal. We should be able to.
Stamp it.
Staff it and stamp it. Through that, and I, believe me, I'm probably gonna get a phone call from the clerk tomorrow, but, you know, we should be able to, to process it there, where, what's they doing, and. Whether it's via the e-permitting process, we can leverage, good, good idea, to leverage the existing processes that are at stake to. You know, dock license, dog license, we have some of those processes in place.
Stations.
Transportation stickers, we know who renewed, who didn't review, we've got a whole separate. We're probably entail some kind of software update to track it, right? Don't know, but, but let's. I would think. Let's take that action to try to get there. Yeah. And be smart about this, I think this is.
But, so that's a, that's a process thing, but as far as the hours go, I mean, I, I said, I had some questions in for Randy already and. But so that's a, that's a process thing, but as far as the hours go, I mean, I, I said, I had some questions in for Randy already and. And part of what I sent you guys, the town clerks were doing um with the dog licenses, pulling on. But for these hours, I think now that we have the staffing, we have Renee in there, that's another seventeen hours a week potentially. To get you into a current state, so I think we have to, I think we have to. Determine when we're gonna end the temporary twenty-eight. And then go forward on the assumption that those extra eighteen hours there are gonna keep you up and running. And actually get you ahead. All year. I mean, we were unstaffed for.
And the, and the, the couple of things, the LPP is, uh, again, it's funded. It's a, it's a revolving account, it's no tax money. The ramps are funded by the ramps, no tax money. The only position, the only work that Ellen does. That has a town account number is secretarial work. So everything else is is funded by non-tax dollars.
And and that's a good reason to, to get all those enabled docks.
I was gonna say, that would be all the more reason to drive better compliance around the LPP. Oh, absolutely, there's no, you will not get an argument from any one of us. In that regard, right. And 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 that even is gonna require, should, if if PD can help there, you know, when they're out.
Yep.
And and look for, okay, this one, no sticker, you know, this one, no sticker. Yes, 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 no, you know, and then feed that back and be a part of the uh. Making sure that people are compliant. The other thing that happens unfortunately is some people will get the sticker. They don't bother putting it on their, on their dock. And that, the, the, re, the, there's two things that are supposed to be on the dock. And it's mandatory by the LPP. There's a a number on it. That number is your address. When you're on the water, people don't know. You know, if there's an accident, and it was deliberately designed with MA. Three di- three or four digits for your street address, and then a code like Berkshire's B E R. Okay, very simple, you know, they were, they're, they kind of tell you where you are. So when you're on the lake and you're on the water. You don't say, well, you know, I think I'm on, I think I'm on Middle Pond, and I think I'm sort of in the middle of it. You can pin it down to emergency services can come out and they know exactly where you are.
Maybe you need to label the la- the sticker, emergency registration number. Let people know this is for emergency.
Well, the, the end of the dock is got, supposed to have, I think they're four inch or six inch high numbers. At that code goes on the end of the outboard end of the dock.
I'm saying, put it, put it on the sticker that it's, this is for emergency purposes, not just the dock registration, but emergency purchase purposes. They may actually put it there.
Yeah.
It's like, like the.
Well, it is in the explanation, it is in the explanation, yeah. Even be having a recurring theme with stickers and non-affixing across different entities and. Yes.
We've got a remedy, right?
Same problem with transfer station was, you know, people. Flip on them.
Just curious if, does that registration number of the dock go to dispatching? Do they have a listing of every, so they can enter it in their, their software?
Uh, we could provide that.
Cause that'd be great, cause they, like you say, they're gonna call up, and if they see, I'm up near three ninety-one, they'll look it up, they're gonna know the address, the house, the whole idea. They can backfill all that information. That would be.
Yeah, yeah. That's, again, that's why, that's why the docks are supposed to have the, that address code on them. Because that tells you where you are. It it closes that loop.
Um, I had a question.
Sure.
Um, now you had said you wanted to try, I just want to understand, um, try to get everything eighteen across the board for the year. Is that what you're saying?
Your.
Condition, twenty-eight.
Trying. Your original hours were eighteen?
Yeah.
Yes, so. Yes, I'd like, I think I see eighteen hours of your time supplemented by the ten. And the seven half floater.
Okay, okay, the ten for the summertime.
Right, but in the summer, ten, eighteen doesn't work in the summer.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Correct, correct.
So how do we address the summer?
Well, I let's, I said, let's, I would like to see the contribution from Renee getting you caught up. Going into next summer, and then let's see if you've got that coverage. Once you're caught up on all the LPP, can you then devote that time to the ramps?
The. I I go over eighteen.
Yeah, she does.
I can work, like Saturday and Sunday, I can work seven, eight hours. And then I.
Just, just ramp stuff.
And actually, and then there's two meetings a month for LM, for the LMC committee and doing the minutes. It's a, it's, it's really busy during that, especially.
It doesn't fit.
June to mid-September, you know, Labor Day, you know. So I definitely, if I had no other. Even if I didn't have secretary, if I just did the boat ramp, it would definitely be over eighteen hours during that.
And and it traditionally was, right, wrong, or indifferent, I mean, for literally three and a half decades, we've, we've managed the ramps. And the person who's the ramp supervisor has filled in. If, if there's a no-show, if, if you're, you know, somebody's sick or whatever. The ramp supervisor fills in.
Too, I mean, that's just all the paperwork, there's dealing with all the money.
Oh, yeah.
It's just, yeah, it's just.
That's a lot of paperwork. Cause we do track, just for your own comfort, every ticket is serialized that we sell, and they are all logged. The serial number gets logged on the log sheet, and it's NCR, triple NCR, so. We know exactly where each ticket went. It was sold, you know, on this date at North Ramp, at South Ramp, at this time. So we track time, date, type of boat. Um, you know, who the ramp attendant is, they sign it, we, you know, we know all those.
In this position of the ramp super, is it ramp supervisor?
Yeah.
In this position. Is it seasonal term, April first through uh December first? When you pull the.
Octo- uh, end of October.
And November.
November first.
And really not more than six months. And could go above eighteen hours a week.
Well, that's eight months. That one is eight months, but can we state April through May are eighteen hours? June through August are twenty-eight, is that what you were doing? Twenty-eight? And then it goes back down. Can it be stated that way? Without triggering.
Through September, yeah.
It is a seasonal, it's just got varying hours.
It's year-round, it's not seasonal.
I'm sorry, what do you mean it's year-round?
Still, okay, start, so be able to December is what you're talking about?
November first, you said, this particular role, this position. If that position was Ellen, and he was the LMC secretary, and he was the LPP part-time. In that role, can the hours be staggered that way without a permanent position?
Yeah.
And then in the role of the LPP administrator, it's.
You can't add that in.
I just, I just got myself stuck there.
Yeah, just hit it, hit that wall. So basically, uh.
We're just gonna be back here next year if we have to increase it during the summer again, correct? Is that what you're all seeing?
I, I, yeah, let me, let's just think about this for a minute and see what we can come up with. Um, and we weren't making a decision today, we were just recapping the situation, getting an update on the activity.
Waterfront positions is a stifled position. Not ours.
Um, I don't know. I'm thinking, I mean, I think then, I think what this sounds like is. Time to put a square peg in it.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly.
And and I think, yeah, the other, the other problem, kind of the other problem is too, is it's very weather dependent. You know, if we have a, a, a rainy week. There's.
Sure, there could be no hours.
No hours.
Trying to accomplish to get benefits, or we dodging the bullet to not do benefits?
We're trying to figure out how to do it, whether it has benefits or not. I I don't think you, you know.
I, I, I'm not looking to work full-time.
Right, I understand that, I'm just saying, if it, if it trips the thresholds, then the, then you qualify for benefits. Second part of that question is, are the benefits coming out of the revolving account too, or it come back under the, the main, you know, gets.
Yeah, well, it's, so first there's like the insurance benefits, which are costly, but secondly, there's, you know, paid time off.
All fringe benefits have to come out of the, a revolving account, the salary comes out of the revolving account, so. And the revolving account is not a bottomless pit.
That's my question.
There, there is a finite number that goes through that each year, and it may not always be Ellen who doesn't necessarily want the benefit. Don't want the insurance or whatever, it won't always be that same person.
Yeah.
So.
So we, so we're, I, so, I, I, yeah, I wanna try and recap, so we're on, kind of on the same page, I hope. Um, the times where we need the extra time for Ellen for lake management. Would be May, June, July, August, September. April's kind of, I don't know, there's so much.
It's, it's getting, um, yeah, it's just.
Again, that's a lot, a lot depends on.
What LPP work done by then.
Well, I'll be doing that at the same time, I mean, at least I did last year. Because the deadline's May fifteenth.
First is what I thought I heard, right?
Which we're trying to get to, it has never been.
Yes, but now she's got Renee to help her.
Yeah.
Where, where it's been hot, what, three years at least, right, without somebody?
Yeah, yeah.
So.
It kind of limped along.
I mean, that should be the goal there with Renee is to get you to that.
Yeah, so that everybody has their paperwork, ideally in like January. And they have January and February to horse around and make their pretty pictures or whatever they have to do, and write the check and and get it in. And then the other thing, like I said, is, is we do the boat and dock and everything else count. And there's a lot of, lot of boats and a lot of docks that are unaccounted for. In the LPP or chapter ninety, you, it doesn't matter, you can have a chapter ninety license. Or you can have LPP, but you have, have one or the other. And there's plenty of them out there that don't have either.
Alright, so you said the, the, the rampant, the ramp supervisor time is May through September. September is essentially gonna be over, so we will.
Yeah, we're, we're essentially.
Bring those hours back. October first or whatever the end of the week is for the end of September, agreed?
Yeah.
And then we'll still.
And we'll.
Work at this and come up with some solutions if we can and. And some ideas to help you make that more efficient. And, um, you know, and definitely get Renee on board to target those things, like those dates.
Sabrina was working with her, I know Julie was working on the filing before she left it. And then where it was been working on, I'm sorry, Sabrina has been working on getting the net and to speak.
And I think one of the things that um was introduced this year was, it used to be a year and it ended. And now every single address has a folder, and I'm not sure whether you have a hundred percent of them now or still in the process. But the idea is, is every home address at waterfront address has a folder in there. So that we also know what people sent in. Did you send in the, the uh, uh, map of what you have? So when they get checked and we go out and find out they doubled it. Then we know, well, the last thing you filed, cause otherwise it's just, they were filed by year.
That is gonna help, that, that is definitely.
That's the long-term, get better, right?
And that should make it a lot easier for renewals to just go bing, 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 bing.
Absolutely.
So, so it seems like that part is getting finally in order.
Yeah.
So.
And that's one of the things that, that Ellen's brought to the table is, is the, the time spent. To bring things into a, a nice clean spreadsheet that covers every year and.
Nobody belittles that effort, trust me.
It's a good investment, very good investment.
Yeah. Okay, so we will, um, continue looking for options and just kind of expect that we'll be back discussing the temporary.
Yeah.
As, as we need to, okay?
Good.
Don't want to leave a sink.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We need to acknowledge and approve a one thousand fifty-dollar refund to be deposited into the library's gift accounts. Um.
How are the stands?
Yes, please.
Double shack is.
Roll call about Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes. Russ Anderson, yes.
We have a couple of appointments, uh, we need to, uh, we can list these and then just do them all at once. If you like, appoint municipal hearing officer Nicole Parker, parking ticket clerk Christina Mayette. An interim tree warden for the period nine twenty-two, twenty-five. To approximately ten twenty-two, twenty-five John Goddard until we hire someone. Fire warden, Richard Stefanowicz. And local emergency planning commission member replacing Russ Anderson will be Ian White. From nine eighteen twenty-five to six thirty twenty-six as the SEMA representative.
So move, second.
Roll call about Diane Gale, I.
Discussion.
Yep.
On the hearing officer, Nicole, is that? Is that a general or is that has to do with um fire fines? Is it, there is a hearing officer that needs to be appointed for um ticketing from the fire department. Which that might be, that might.
I believe it is, okay.
Sorry.
Yep. Fire appeals.
Perfect.
Okay. So did we do?
Yeah.
Did we finish?
Forty U six. Uh, we gotta go.
Roll call about Diane Gale, I.
Doug Morgan, yes. Ross Anderson, yes.
Other new business, I have nothing new.
I have one new thing. Um, I've been approached and contacted several times now, I've, we've been getting, and I, I personally received them as well. Is uh letters from Eversource that they're gonna come and do some ma- meter replacements with smart meters. Um, I think I get what they are, and I think I understand how they work, but I still think that there's probably some confusion and. And um concern about these, and I would like to request that we have. We reach out to our governmental liaison from Eversource to hold a public hearing at a public informational session, if you will. At town hall to demonstrate and discuss what these smart meters are, aren't, and any concerns residents may have their way. If not, the rumors and, and everything will run wild, then people will be off to the races, I think we should get out there in front of it.
Okay.
Um, that's it for me for new business.
I have one thing, um, I received a letter today, or we received a letter today from the Conservation Commission, now the norm's here, that's great. Um, kind of just requesting that we pay for a tree that's dead on uh North Pond Conservation Land. Um, and I think it's the conservation's responsibility to manage the trees on their land. So I think it should go back to the Conservation Commission, and they figure out how to pay for the trees on their land that needs to be removed. I was in agreement with that, with their land manage, with their land management funds. Which is what that's, they hold the conservation restriction on it. In my opinion. So, I mean, you, the letter should be in front of you right now, I asked her to give a copy to everybody.
This is cool.
Oh, alright, well, I will um scan it in and send it to you. This, you can't make a decision tonight, so, cause you don't know enough information, that's it right there, I think, no? And so that will be my recommendation, though, to you is to is to bring it back to the responsibility of the Contamination Conservation Commission. So the the vote will have to be probably next week, that this was just, we just received this today.
Okay. Um, Nadine, anything new? Okay, old business, goals and objectives, um. Discussion or updates on anybody's particular goals and objectives? Anybody got anything to update on what they?
I mean, my only comment would be on the the comment on regards channel fifteen, um. Is, I think we need to move that up a little quicker, we're we're paying substantial money every month, we're getting nothing for it. The uh, it's a huge disappointment that the nine eleven ceremony wasn't wasn't done, where our graduations weren't done, we're we're basically have no. Nothing being created for Southwick.
My husband noted the strawberry supper is still being advertised.
In June, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's it's like we've been unplugged and. My personal feeling is.
You wanna spearhead that, were you?
I don't have a problem spearheading it, but at my point where we almost have to start regrouping and. Maybe, you know, unplug it for a bit and regroup and go, you know?
I'm happy to work with Russ and if, I mean, to have the ability to. Restructure channel fifteen or or, you know, make serious decisions.
And plan for the future with fiber if if we're not.
Be part of it, yeah.
Right, we're not gonna have all that same funding from the peg, so. You know, plant, work it into the plan. Okay.
Obviously, it has to come back here and do. There would be, you know, some hurdles to go.
I I don't have a problem if you wanna take hold of that and. Move it. I I did wanna add um exploring legal incentive options for resident. Civil servants, educators, um.
Senior techs.
Seniors.
Yeah.
Um, and also to advertise better those that we already offer, because they're very hidden. Hard to find, don't even, people don't even know. Um, in fact, the community preservation needs to be updated, it's from twenty twenty-three. The um, low and moderate income.
About the IT stuff, or postings within the website?
No, I'm talking about some outreach to residents of these exemptions they may qualify for and and have them current. At least, um, so I I'd like to work on that with you and and put that on my list of.
Maybe um.
Priorities.
Maybe what would help is if there's half a dozen things that you'd like to see. That outlet too, like what what shows do you wanna see, what information do you wanna transfer? You know, use fifteen as an outlet to communicate.
We could put that there too, sure, absolutely, yeah.
I'm sorry, I thought that's what your math was.
No, oh, yeah, that's just another way to 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 do that outreach. But but I'm I'm talking about.
Wanna see, you know, in your own minds, think should be that, in that avenue, then.
Okay. Um, so that was one that I wanted to put on the, you know, you you had asked for objectives that we can get done before.
Right.
May.
I I should.
Um, and then I would like to. Also, we had talked about um. Reviewing some revenue streams, the meals tax, the fees, the fines, the applications, I would like that. Um, I don't know if that's doable for you, cause it's gonna be you to have that done.
Yeah.
Some kind of comprehensive review of that. Um, and then some other conversation I had, I'd like to add one more thing to the C A O, the flip side of that. Um, reviewing revenue streams is. In in auditing, the first thing auditors look for is miscellaneous other expenses. I would like to see a review of all of our miscellaneous annual or quarterly payments to other entities. For things like ser- services, consulting, facility charges.
I'm saying that miscellaneous on a line item of the existing budget or a thing that was turned in.
On a line item, uh 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 in individual, individual expenditures. That that might say other goods and services or. Use of facilities or something, what are they? Do, are they just? Historical, is there something behind them? What are they? Let's look at them, are they competitive? There's a lot that can get buried under repeat other, is what I'm saying.
I haven't come across a contract or anything, you know, that says other, because I would need to know details before I pay anything, so I haven't seen anything like that. Besides, the school has some others and.
Okay. So so I think that's just a good thing to take a look at.
Another hand raising.
I tried it, it seemed to work.
Something just popped up, so fourteen.
Alright. Um, anything else on the current goals and objectives? I would like to, so I'm gonna jump to master plan goals and objectives, these are the. Final lead. Item recommendations from the master plan for the select board. With all. Four um select board members contributions in the far right, there's two columns, one is all four. People, and the last column is the current three on the rankings. Of of what we all prioritized, just this is for your information. And we will have to address these at some point, whether we are going to. Recommend not doing some of these and justify why. And then those that we do want to pursue, some of them I've already married into our goals and objectives. Alright, so you sort of get that one?
Well, one of them looks like it got transferred to us now, and so it's not.
It's not, it went to the bottom because it wasn't in what we did, it may come, obviously, it will come to the top, it's the fiber. One of them.
One of them, yeah, and the housing authority, right?
Yeah. So one of them will come.
And for those following at home, the reason there's four is cause there was a change on the select board, so the. Previous occupant is in there, and then the new uh, the new member, Mr. Anderson is on here, so it did shuffle a couple of things.
So that Russ wasn't obligated to someone else.
I just, when you said for select, but I'm sure somebody is gonna watch this and go huh? There you go.
Okay, and then if I can. Then jump to the master plan. For us, under old business. This. Eight. The. The master plan. As as a lead party, we have one for Nicole to follow, um. Maybe even follow on, so uh uh for the master plan, all the lead parties have. An obligation to report what they are going to do or not going to do, when they're going to do it, what they have done. To those co- uh so far in those commitments, as I said, I took our goals and objectives. Married into it. Our lead party actions, this. Form is pretty much those items that um. Got married, that we can report, we are working on, we will work on, we are prioritizing. Along with our select board goals. Some of them are actually completed, and they're highlighted over on the right as completed, there are four that we can call complete. There's a couple more that we can complete in year one, year two. Year five on. One of them. And this is the reporting format that the master plan implementation committee has. Drafted, it may get some tweaking still, but. So I would like you to take a look at these over the next week, see that you agree that these can. Happen in a decent timeframe as illustrated here. And then we can agree on this and submit it to the ethic. And again, these these pretty much, I took our goals and objectives and pulled what matches as the first. Attempts here. Okay.
Homework.
Yep. Alright, anything else under, that was my old business?
Uh, one thing I wanted to bring up, just. Kinda came up time, um. Was trying to get legal opinions on. You you said you reached out twice and.
And called.
And that's two weeks, right?
The ninth was when I sent it out.
Alright, so here we are.
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, um. That's just not acceptable. Um, I'm involved with two other communities and there's stuff that's going back and forth daily.
Yeah.
Um, as the norm, nothing critical. I I just don't know what we do about it, I guess it's a question, I know at one point you were looking at doing an RFP. I don't know if you have discussions with them about performance, I don't know.
Well, at one point, Doug, you were gonna reach out to Ben.
Yeah, and I I kinda held off, I think we should do that, I if you'd like me to to do that, I will do that this week, and I also think Brian should call in in front of us to say. How we doing, what's going on, why are we having this issue, and let's have the discussion, I'll certainly call him tomorrow. And and see what's what, I mean, I know they were.
Have a conversation.
They had a, I had a conversation with him, yeah, informally, but um. You know, I think that they got wind of, where they were told that, well, we're doing an RFP and you guys are out, and I think.
I never told him anything, so.
I I understand, but that was communicated to them uh by me, but um. So I think we need to kind of reset that, I'll I'll reach out to them tomorrow, I've been dealing with them a long time, both on this board and previous boards.
I have questions outstanding from, I think, um, February. That that I remind.
Shoot me a note of what they are, without, I don't think we're breaking anything lost, but I can just bring them to him, but um. Will shoot me a note of what they are, and I'm hoping. The degree, it's not acceptable, that went two weeks without, on this particular issue, cause it's a.
Well, it ends up being a month on iron, by the time you get a, you know, nothing moves fast.
Yeah.
And it's not, it's not just us that isn't getting response. I I've had. Other board commissions tell me they're lagging, yeah. Anything else? Old. Nope.
No.
Okay.
Right here.
Oh, sorry. He jumped ahead of you.
Figured it may.
Yes, go ahead.
I brought this up a couple times, we need to make a decision on this, though, um. Cause the the Rotary has been hounding me about, we we gotta either decide to renew it and send in our monies. Or decide we're not gonna renew it, but we need to decide and let them know either way.
We just talked about it today, so.
So as a board, I don't, I I don't know if we've discussed it, I know I've sent a a note on it a couple times to have it put on the agenda or carry it forward, but. I just think we owe it to to the Rotary to either, to let them know what our decision is on that.
I I let them know what our predicament was, but um, so I get, by next week, we can.
Yes, for sure.
Okay, so we'll bring it back next week.
And what what is it benefit for you guys to be members?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I mean, they do a great job, the Rotary's always done a lot for the community, there are other groups that do a lot for the community as well. Um, the Selectmen often actively participate in events that they hold either as a guest or in attendance at certain things that. We do within the community, part of the roles of being on the select board, um, and I don't. I don't remember the exact circumstance that we got involved with actually being corporate members of Rotary for whatever reason.
So I think what happened was, what, five years ago? Six years ago, I think their numbers were dwindling, uh, and they went out with the community because the association we sponsored. But you remember two or four members, right, from from the Fire Association to be on the Rotary? Yeah, you might be right, might've been Alliance.
They're on the Lions Club, I don't know about Rotary.
No, but I mean, that's, it gets blurred.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think they're on anymore, but um.
He wanted to get a little.
I I don't see how we can be on one particular board.
That's what I was.
Right.
I, yeah, yeah.
And that's been my take on it, and you know, frankly. I'm a little bit resource constrained at time, and I feel like I haven't done all I should be doing for some of these loops. You know, I I know I'm on one of the the text messaging lists for, I think it's probably Rotary and.
Yep.
It's the most popular number of texts I get in a week, um. You know, I I I I help where I can, but I, you know, I can't be a full-time member of Rotary on top of being a member of the select board and. Have a day job and a couple other things going on as well, so that's just my take on, I just think we should come to conclusion on it and close the loop on it. Um, coverage smart meters, uh, speaking of, we should, one thing I should, we should bring forward to. Um, to channel fifteen is, every month, we have, there is a radio show called Everything. Or around Southwick or Everything Southwick, that's the third Wednesday of every month, it's been a, it's been done by the select board. Um, for years and years, the last few years, um. Jase, uh, it used to be Russell, Joseph and myself, and we would, every third month, one of us would do it. Uh, Jason used to do it. Uh, Diane had told me she didn't want to do it, she said when she's ready or had something to talk about, she would do it. And then when Mr. Anderson was elected, uh, he he hasn't chosen to do it yet either. You've been on it with me once or twice, I've done it, I just show up every third Wednesday at nine o'clock or eight o'clock in the morning over there and. Uh, and and kinda go through topics of the day and kinda have a conversation with Peter Cowles, but. One, that should probably be played back on channel fifteen here as as a resource available, certainly making it available to. You know, the other members of the select board that wanna do it, and if we wanted to do it together, we could, we just have to post it as a meeting. Um, it's it's apolitical, it's kinda just a conversation, it's your show, you can bring a guest if you'd like, you can talk about any topic you'd like. So, no obligation, no pressure, but it is a time slot that's available to us, they also now have a. Diff, they also, it's simulcast on ra- on radio, and they just moved to FM from from their previous station. But they also record it, and then it posted on YouTube on their YouTube channel, which we could also bring over to here as well. Um, and it's a good way to kind of expand, I talked probably for forty minutes, we talked about health insurance, right, it was just, it's the topic to discuss right now. Um, but I just wanted to get that out there, that we recorded it this past week, um, and I saw it was on YouTube uh yesterday or last night. And one note, just coming out of public comment, you know, I um, I had an email discourse with a member of the community. Um, if if Comcast is working on your street. And your phone doesn't work. It's also highly possible you may have Comcast as your phone provider, right, if you've got the triple play or whatever. They're also your phone provider, so that sometimes gets lost in, while your phone doesn't work, if they're working on something with your internet, your internet may be in and out. Your phone's not gonna be very responsive until they're done and off the street with what they're doing. So. And I, you know, we met with uh, uh, just a fiber, quick fiber update. Um, Nicole and myself and the Whip City folks met over. At a corner of the town facility to try to look at a place for a future location for the hut, and we've identified a couple locations. Near the edge of Prifty Park. Um. And the public safety complex of where that could probably go. I then had a subsequent conversation on Friday with uh the DPW guys and the police chief. Um, and showed them where we were thinking, and we're pretty close to where we wanna be, as far as where that that thing could live. I don't think it can be exactly where we had envisioned it on Thursday due to some new information, which I'll. I don't think it can be exactly where we had envisioned it on Thursday due to some new information, which I'll share with Ms. Parker. Um. But I think we ended up with a better spot. That's it for me, thank you.
Okay. Moving on to complete streets policy, um, there was some questions. Um, John Daughters not with us tonight, but he did send an email and I'll just uh. Read the, read out the part that he said, at the last select board meeting, concerns were raised about the ramifications. Surrounding the potential adoption of a complete streets policy for the town of Southwick. Board members observed that the stereotypical complete street is not always the best fit for a neighborhood. Nor is it always the best use of funds. Further, the board raised the question of how becoming a complete streets community would affect roadway projects in our rural community. John, I had the opportunity to speak with Dan Holmes, the PE of Thai and Bond, who regularly tends to our local infrastructure projects. Dan shared a few key observations. In his time, he has never encountered a circumstance. Where locally funded projects have been subject to a state mandate, forcing the implementation of complete street elements. In the case of a tip project and similar programs such as recently completed at Congamon Road. Complete street elements are mandated whether or not a community has joined the program. Mr. Holmes' feedback appears to align with our understanding that becoming a complete streets community. Cements a local commitment to carefully consider complete street solutions when considering projects of varying magnitude. Provides a pathway to pursue and receive funding for those elements and preserves local control for locally funded projects. If we have any further questions, we can feel free to reach out, and did you have anything you wanted to add, because you were gonna. Research a little bit of that.
I didn't, I was not able to find, I was like, kept researching, um, you know, what went wrong with complete streets and. There really was, there was no negative feedback on. That I could find, when I, all I did was Google for maybe fifteen minutes, just trying to find something, so. Um. Because I completely understand where you're coming from, uh, but. I didn't really find anything that, you know, oh, you have to put a bike lane in every single street and you have to go down to one lane. I I didn't see any of that.
So I don't know if that. Answers any questions we have or makes us feel any more. Secure about our local control. And design.
Not me.
Um. But we, i- if we.
What was the pos-? What was the plus on it?
There's.
Funding.
That's what I liked about it, it's like the safe routes to school, since we have the rail trail, it's like they're really, um. You know, supportive of that kind of transportation.
And we may not ever use it if if our projects aren't gonna line up with. A complete streets um. Philosophy. If if we don't have any further. Uh, business being. Evolved around college highway or around the bike trail. We may not ever call on it. Those those particular grants. But I guess if there is the opportunity, that's what it, I guess, to me, that's what it. Is. We will look at it, any of our new construction or our reconstruction. And see if we can slide some of that in and get some funding. If it fits, it's like if it's, if it fits.
I think any of the major. I just leery of these programs where it's always optional and nothing ever, oh, it's no big deal, until they tell you, you gotta do it and then you're stuck. And then you can't opt that, for some reason, you're never allowed out of these things, but and if and. The time bond gentleman's correct, if it's tipped, they're gonna mandate it anyway. Um. But if if it's a tip, it might most mostly be funded from the state with their with their money to do the project in the first place with a. You know, generally, it's a small local match and usually it's in kind. Um, basically engineering services from the local.
Consider if they're gonna, if they're gonna come in and pave. Granville Road. Will we be able to get? Sidewalks. Done all the way of Granville Road.
I take that wager now, and man, I think I know the answer to that too. The answer is negative, that would be, because there'd be takings and. The engineering work and the design work versus they're gonna mill and pave. Granville Road and we're gonna go any, we we've got to reallocate all of our.
Will will we be able to? Get some funding to improve the existing sidewalks in those dense residential areas?
I don't know.
It's a, it's a perhaps, that's.
I I just think that the downside of it, because I think of where you'd want to do projects that might have some complete. El- elements of what complete streets are. A good chunk of them are gonna be part of the tip. And they're gonna be a tip project anyway, so thinking. Um. At least portions thereof, right? Um. Bet you're gonna be doing a complete reconstruction where you'd be relaying out a road, so like fifty seven. From the old pro- old tip project to the center. Ten and two oh two was just redone, they're not gonna be touching that for a while, Congamon Road was just redone, they're not gonna be touching that for a while. The Powder Mill Road project is one where you might want to be looking at some of those elements, because there's. There's elements of sidewalk that, but that's part of the safe route to school, not necessarily a complete street, and I don't know where those intersect. I just assume leave it alone for right now if it were up to me, but I'm I'm but one member of a three-member port.
There's certainly no rush to do. To to commit to the policy.
Do we, um. Know if the folks with beta would have any info on that?
Uh, you're in touch with beta.
Yeah, I mean. But that was.
I guess you could ask.
Yeah.
I can, I can email him, see what he says.
Sure. So I guess we will. Our our.
Carry the. Haven't done it for two hundred and fifty years.
Yeah. And and maybe not next week, but sometime in the future, then. Yeah. Um. Oops. Alright. Other old business, update on three oh six feeding kills road, potential CPC acquisition, we did go out there, um.
I sent a note to the guy today, promised I would, he's back today.
Okay, perfect to get in.
To get a contact for who we should talk to, correct.
Okay.
But on licensing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I meant, I should ask. Mr. Grinnell's while he was here, because. He does that, um, it's not Mass Highway, but it's a Commonwealth, it's probably the. Um, the same group. What's the group is official landholder for the Commonwealth?
I don't know.
Uh, there's a.
That decan thing?
That's it, decan.
Yeah.
They're the ones who probably actually control that, if you, if even if if Mass Highway says yes, you probably go back to Lisa. But that's a common. It seemed like a common sense solution when we were standing there. So we looked across the street and there's a big piece of property off the.
Flat.
South side of fifty seven. That's. Was pre- uh. Cleared off by, I want to say it was former DP director Chevalier many years ago. Uh, to reduce the amount of icing on that section of road, because it would open it up to sunlight, but it would be an ideal spot. If the state would lease us that property. To put a couple of a small parking area. Um, you have to cross Route fifty seven anyway, the trail comes from the south side to the north side. Right in that area, right at the entrance of the old, right where the old fifty seven goes around. Uh, goes southerly, so. Uh.
And across the street is better clearance traffic wise.
So it looked to be like a win-win-win without having to. Spend town money to buy a piece of property that could be, or you know, uh, however you want.
But we would only need a half an acre.
Yeah, and we, so we would just lease a piece of that, or you know, if they would offer a lease.
An acre.
Yeah.
Just for. Mass ten cars.
Yeah.
So. Good, good opportunity.
You know, more land that you have to clear dead trees from.
Well, it's like somebody.
And it's already clear.
Yeah, it's already, it's already clear, yeah.
It's just brushing there, so, and we don't really need to maintain it, we don't have to do anything to it.
Famous last words, General Custer.
Well, it wouldn't be ours, well, it'd be our lease, alright, so just that update, so that contact is in process. Um, and then Great Brook. Dredging update, there was a nine twelve teams meeting to introduce Darren Davis from NRCS and his teams. From Pear and Tetra Tech. Those are two organizations working with them on the dredging opportunities to reopen the flows of the Brooks and the Lakes. With flooding and erosion mitigation in mind. They've been here doing site visits, they were out in boats, they were out in boobts, um. And now they're in the data gatherings, they've, so they've done their visual and photos and stuff, now they're doing data gathering. They say that that data. Gathering can take up to a year. And then working it into models and stuff. Um, however. When listing some of the data that they'd like from the town, because of our long-serving. Um, and kind of forward-thinking and meticulous, like management committee, they have. A ton of the data they're already looking for, and they have years of it. So they were very pleased to to hear that that. Was available. Um, they do expect some. Initial alternatives to be developed by December and then draft some plans by spring. Still while they're gathering data and doing modeling. And they're setting up a SharePoint site to provide current updates, um. And then I think they're looking to schedule a public meeting in October. Public information session in October. For the community. On the project.
It's going to be.
Twelve or fifteenth or something?
October fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Is that confirmed?
Um, well, I, you know, I don't, I. I know and I don't. I know it's confirmed, I'm not sure of the date, I want to make.
Okay, that I had a note to make sure you were, I I don't remember if you were still here when they were talking about that and. Okay, so somebody's gonna coordinate and publish it.
Yes.
Um, okay, so that's all I got under other old business.
Speaking of er- erosion and drainage, you sent out a communication over, I think it was Friday or Saturday about that. Can we get moving on what's going on on South Long Year there? We've allocated the money. We have identified a huge continuing ongoing problem, do they gotta get in front of.
I said. If we needed an emergency order, we'd get an emergency order, I mean. This is how it goes, we have to fix it, we don't wait a month for.
Did you see John's response to me, like question that?
Uh, no, I didn't check my email on that.
You did answer it.
Okay.
The local permitting seems to be the delay. But.
We don't need to wait.
In all, we respect conservation.
Or or the other state agencies have to approve something.
So an emergency.
DEP had to approve something.
Yeah.
Not under.
But can it be an emerg- is it, is, that was the question, was it an emergency? But I think the photos that they sent this past weekend have shown even more erosion that, and and we don't even have rain.
And in defense of John. I I don't think it's, it lies with him, and the department, but they're also. Under pressure due to staffing.
Yes.
You know, I get it, I don't know, picking on me, I just wanna, I want to make sure we're not sending messages like, let's go.
Absolutely.
And if, you know, whatever needs to get done, and if.
We declare an emergency, then we need to do that.
I don't know.
So they can.
I told John that today, okay.
Is that within our purview to, I don't even know if it is.
Yeah, it is.
Really?
It's the left board.
No, I mean, what kind, we can, certain kind of emergencies we can declare, I don't know if that's one of them. I don't know, I'm.
I'm I'm just thinking about my last shot, I can't tell you how many times we've declared, like, we need an emergency department, get really, and do something.
Close this hillside to his home. If it's close to his home and the hillside comes cake, if there can be a landslide, it's an emergency.
I'd have to look at that.
John said he had.
I'm more worried about.
They had a plan, I thought.
I think if it was an imminent threat, I think that he would have done something more, I think, I don't think it's that serious.
So if we get another five inch rain, then.
Don't work.
Yeah.
All of a sudden it is.
The problem is, it is, it's getting. It's not slowly degrading.
In October and.
We're supposed to get an interest on Thursday, but.
And that, then it's gonna be too late to. So it is kind of a. Threat. So if we can declare that, yes. I I think we should. And do it.
I just.
We already approved it, we already.
Yeah, but I knew we just got it. And or. Tell conservation. You know, what? What do we need to do to, I don't wanna, I don't want to usurp their authority, that's not what I'm trying to do, but if. They need, if they need to call a special out-of-cycle meeting in order to to grant that order of conditions, emergency. Order of conditions, then they should do that, that's, that's something that they should do. Are they, are they meeting tonight?
No, um, no, that, I did send that back to John today, if this is emergency, we can get emergency permit, so.
Correct, so and, so I I I make a motion that if it is within the purview of the select board to give the. The chair the authority to. Make that declaration for this limited scope.
So let me just. I'm sorry.
No, please finish your.
You made a motion, do you want a second?
Uh, he's got.
Or you still want to discuss that?
No, I'll just give you the update from John. Um. Uh, notice, conservation notice for tent, which requires an application and stamped plan to be submitted to both the local conservation and Mass DEP. Although it is expected that the local half of the filing fee and local bylaw fee will be waived. Fees will apply for legal ad and the state. I met with conservation last Monday to provide an update on the matter and discuss a permitting path. Um.
So you're right, but what happens if the bridge goes or the culvert?
I don't think the cul- I mean, it's just, it, that whole. Hillside is heading toward the 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 river, it's the great book right there, right, so it's heading right toward it, and it's not getting. Uh, progressively worse, is as it's, it's getting massively worse every time it rains over there, from what I've seen from. Uh, the homeowner in my own eyes over there. I just think we, the more we wait, the worse it gets, I get that. You know, we are at best treading water, I get it. I have short. Um.
And and what do they need, public notice and hearings and stuff, I mean.
John says he can stamp it, but.
I mean, if if the bridge is in danger.
And I guess maybe we'd have to make that decision, or someone's got to make that decision.
Alright, so he made a motion if if we can declare that.
If we need to, yeah, by all means. Sorry.
Roll call both angle, I.
Yes, yes.
Okay. Alright. Any other old business? Minutes. Open session minutes, acknowledge and approve from August fourteenth and September eighth.
This gold item, was there something we're supposed to?
No, that was an FYI. Only.
What in, eighth and the sixteen?
August fourteenth was our. Goals and objectives.
So.
Meeting and September eighth, our last meeting. Roll call about Daniel, I. Payroll uh, warrants, acknowledged payroll warrant number two six oh seven dated September eighth, twenty twenty five in the amount of two hundred ninety one thousand four hundred ninety two dollars and twenty six cents. Acknowledged payables warrant number two six zero eight B dated September sixteenth, twenty twenty five in the amount of. Three hundred thirty eight dollars, three hundred ele- three hundred thirty eight thousand, three hundred eleven dollars, twenty three cents. Anything else? Question to you.
John. Sorry.
Roll call about Daniel.
I have no one, yes.
Thank you, folks, thank you, buddy. Thank you, folks, online.